Okay, we are recording.
All right, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. I call into session its regular school board business meeting of Stillwater area public schools on September 10, 2020. Due to the current federal and state emergency guidelines, the Minnesota directive limiting person-to-person contact during the coronavirus pandemic. This meeting is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota statutes 13D dot zero two one, meetings by telephone or other electronic means. The board has determined that it is not feasible for at least one board member, the superintendent, or the district's legal counsel to be physically present at the regular meeting location, and that it is not feasible for the public to attend this meeting at the regular location due to the health pandemic. Persons may monitor this meeting via live stream on YouTube through a link on the district website. School board members wishing to speak have been asked to raise their hand and wait to be recognized. All votes will be conducted by roll call. Each school board member should wait until their name is called before voting and indicate by saying yes or no, and clearly using a thumbs up for a yes. This meeting is being recorded. Access to the recording will be made available on the school district's website as soon as possible. And just to be clear, that's a prepared statement. Unfortunately, folks, we are having difficulty accessing YouTube tonight, and we will have the the recorded meeting up on YouTube as soon as we possibly can. And so with that, I would like to start out with a roll call, please. Sherry?
Director Bruington.
You're on mute.
Here.
Thank you. Director Gals.
Gillis, and I'm here.
Gillis, thank you. Gillis. Director Pelletier? Director Potatik?
Here.
Director Riley? Here. Director Weisberg? And Chair Stivland?
Here.
So Director Weisberg is absent. You have a quorum with six members.
Thank you so much, Sherry. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda tonight?
So moved.
Director Potatik in the second?
Second.
Thank you, Director Riley. All in favor, we need a roll call vote again. Sherry?
Director Bruington?
Yes.
Director Gillis?
Yes.
Director Pelletier?
Yes.
Director Potatik?
Yes.
Director Riley?
Yes.
Chair Stivland?
Yes.
You have unanimous vote.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is to swear in our new, two new board members. We have Director Bill Gillis and we have Director Tim Bruington. I am so excited to have you both here, and I have some words to share with us tonight. It is an honor that you were selected to guide the education of our community's children. As you recite the oath of office, you assume a tremendous responsibility as a director of our school district with the duties empowered by the Minnesota Legislature. This power puts you and the other members of our school board in a position of being both morally and legally responsible for the equitable quality education for every student in the district. In carrying out this responsibility, you will be asked to fulfill the roles of vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy. In providing vision, the board with extensive participation of the community envisions the community's educational future, and then formulates the goals, defines the outcomes, and sets the course for the public schools. To achieve the vision, the board establishes a structure and creates an environment designed to ensure all students the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. Because as a board, we must be accountable to the community, we must ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children. As board members, we serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community schools to advance the vision for our schools. Furthermore, we must strive to work together with the superintendent and staff to lead the district toward fulfilling the visions we have created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills and knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. And so with that, I'd like to have you, I both raise your right hand and repeat after me. Having signed the acceptance of office and oath of office.
Having signed the acceptance of office and oath of office.
I hereby publicly affirm.
I hereby publicly affirm.
My commitment to the oath of office.
My commitment to the oath of office.
I affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state.
I affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state.
And that I will discharge faithfully.
And that I will discharge faithfully.
The duties of the office of school board member.
The duties of the office of school board member.
Of independent school district number eight three four.
Of independent school district number eight three four.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations, and thank you so much for serving our school district and our community. We are so glad to have you both here.
Thanks for having us.
Okay, the next item on our agenda tonight is the superintendent report.
Hey, thank you, Chair Stivland and Board Directors. It's great to see our new Board Directors with us tonight. I am so excited this week. All of the hard work, the time, the effort has arrived to have all of our kids back in in school this week. And started out Tuesday morning, driving to Oakland Middle School, and you just still get those first day jitters with our sixth grade transition. Sixth grade students A day and B day, Tuesday and Wednesday. Just seeing the students pull up in buses and cars and arriving, and so many staff ready and greeting them outside and in the hallways, and our students, older students that were there, to also welcome them. It was just really neat to see, and I cannot say enough to our, to just think, I guess, our building principals, the custodial staff, the nutrition staff, the summer childcare, again, I want to do a shout out to them as well. The secretaries, paras, they, wow, they really did so much to welcome our kids and our families this week. So it was, it was a really special beginning, and this is a soft start. Many people were thanking us for changing the calendar to give them some more time to to prepare for this, and I think it was well worth it. It's paid off, and I know they're still working very hard, but it's, it's going well. And just, just excited to see more next week. Also, would like to give a shout out to the athletic teams that are starting out practices. We have a lot going on, and more information will be coming. They've, a lot of them have been outside, and it's, it's fun to see, and they are physical distancing and following all of those, those protocols. It's neat to see them connected again. And then our school board student reps will start during our September 24 meeting, excited to have them on board during that time. And just real quick, we're looking at our social emotional supports this year, and Frasier is offering a Help Me Connect and a Hope Line that offers partnerships with local pediatricians and children's mental health services with free consults. So if families are interested in that, please contact your school during the school year. And with that, that's it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Let's see. The next item on the agenda is the open forum. And I have another thing we have to read. Open forum expectations during the pandemic. School board meetings will be held electronically until further notice. If you wish to speak to the school board, you will be able to do so at the beginning of the school board meeting during open forum. A sign up for open forum speakers is available online on the board webpage from 3:00 to 4:00 p.m. on the day of the board meeting to provide time for instructions to connect to the meeting to be said to speakers. You may sign in only for yourself, not other individuals or groups. The order of speakers will be established on a first come, first served basis. Due to time limitations, we will limit the number of speakers to 15 for three minutes each. You will need the ability to join the meeting electronically, either by phone or online. You will receive instructions for joining the meeting 30 to 60 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Stillwater area school district welcomes input from citizens as community involvement fosters better decision-making and improved learning experiences for all students. While comments and questions are welcome during open forum, law prohibits the board from discussing concerns about individual employees or students in a public meeting. We will stop the proceedings immediately if employee or student privacy issues are raised and direct the speaker to forward comments regarding individual employees or students to the superintendent. Because we are modeling civil discourse for our community, speakers must present their testimony in a respectful manner. Vulgarity, character attacks, malice, or specific complaints identifying staff or students by name or implication will not be permitted. The board will not deliberate, discuss, or engage in conversation with speakers during our open forum. However, the board may ask administration to review the concerns that are presented. And with that, I will ask Carissa, do we have a first speaker ready to go?
We do have three speakers, and I believe our first speaker is Dawn Beavers.
Okay.
And it looks like Dawn is joining us. We're ready for you, Dawn, if you can hear us?
Yes, can you hear me? We're good?
We can, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Stivland, members of the board, Superintendent Lansfeld, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you this evening. First, I would like to acknowledge our two new board members tonight, Tim Bruington and Bill Gillis. As far as I can tell through my research, Mr. Bruington is the first black person ever to sit on a Stillwater area school board. I would like to thank Mr. Bruington for stepping forward, giving both our minority students and special education students a voice on this board. Mr. Gillis has an elementary school student, which is a unique, which is unique to this current board. Next, I'd like to talk about fiscal responsibility. I truly believe that this board cannot allow the waste of our taxpayers' money. We have a $7 million bus garage that we cannot use, and yet some members of this board voted not to do an investigation into what went wrong. How can you not want to know what went wrong with $7 million of taxpayer money? Something clearly went wrong, or else we would currently be using the Lake Elmo location instead of paying astronomical rent at another location. When specifically asked about the investigation, one member of this board told me directly that they do not believe in holding people accountable. Really? That's not a person I want in charge of our students' money. I would like to thank the board for looking at new bus companies and saving the district over $700,000 in the next two years. We now have a Minnesota-based company running reliable bus service to our students even during this pandemic. And the buses I've seen look almost brand new. That's good, too. Finally, I'd like to challenge the board and our new administration to build a strong relationship together based on trust and communication. Both need to embrace accountability and fiscal responsibility while making sound, data-driven decisions that place students at the forefront. I pray that we, as a district, can come together, take the high road, and stop personally attacking people who are doing public service by serving on this board. We can disagree and call each other out on policy or decisions made, but should not be name-calling. We will never teach our children to do better if we can't do the same. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Annie Cashman. Welcome, Annie. We can hear you. If you're ready to go ahead and get started.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for your time. My name is Annie Cashman. I am a resident of West Lakeland, Minnesota, or West Lakeland, and I have two children at St. Craig Catholic kindergarten and a second grader. I just want to, you know, thank you for, you know, providing this forum to raise a few concerns that myself and fellow St. Craig Catholic school parents are having. That being said, I know this is an incredibly challenging time for all of you, and I appreciate all of your service and hard work and candor, and I know that you're all doing the best you can. So just wanted to start with that. But we are reaching out because we have clarity and need clarity, and quite frankly, just some collaboration in three main areas. The first one is busing clarification. Point eight would be like if, if you guys choose to go to a full-distance learning model and a true justification as to why you are not offering services on Fridays, even though you are technically in school. We understand how we would synergize our schedule for in-person calendar, you know, during normal times with the Stillwater calendar, such as vacations and breaks, but to expect 30-plus Fridays without busing, I believe, is out of scope for our arrangement, and we would love to have more dialogue and collaboration on that issue. Secondly, we are, we would like to have someone, you know, full-time or full support for our special needs students. Virtual learning just is not an acceptable plan for us. We can't, we don't, we did not plan to have staff around to support that, that arrangement, such as having someone with the special needs students with a computer, or you know, being with them one-on-one in the, in the school. You know, so we would really prefer and quite frankly, expect to have some one-on-one attention, like we always have, either off-site where we would bus the students back and forth, or having someone come onto the campus at St. Craig Catholic. You know, I just, I can't understand how that, how it would work virtually, and I think all of our parents and most of you would agree with that, that that's, you know, probably the number one need for, for our students, you know, that have special needs. Lastly, this is just a simple one, but a fully agreed upon and communicated schedule on around our nursing. The first day at school, we quite frankly, had someone show up, and we didn't even know they were coming. So I know that there's been volleying back and forth over email, but I really think just some true collaboration, you know, from our student, from, you know, your board, Superintendent Lansfeld, and our principal or our president Liz Dole would be very much appreciated and needed. You know, we understand this is a really complex time, but from our perspective, we've had our plans laid out that we are going back to school now for over three months. It hasn't been no secret, no surprise that St. Craig Catholic is going back full-person instruction. We empathize with the lack of plan from the state of Minnesota, and that has put you guys in a tremendous pickle, totally understand that. But by law, that doesn't re-change, change your requirements that you have to provide for us. These services are, quite frankly, the law, especially around special needs education and nursing. They need to be provided to homeschool, private school, and charter schools. You know, I read back that you guys are experiencing budgeting issues, but as a taxpayer, quite honestly, like, that doesn't matter. Those are services that still need to be provided. That doesn't change the requirements that need to be provided to our school. And lastly, in the letter that was written back to Sister Maria Vanna, you, you know, referenced what other school districts are doing. That also is irrelevant. We have a one-to-one relationship. We don't work with any other private schools. We don't have a relationship with them. You guys don't have any relationships with other school district, other than you're part of the state of Minnesota, but what we do in Stillwater matters to what we do in Stillwater. It should have no bearing what other school districts are providing or not providing for their student, for their charter schools, home schools, and private schools. So that's all really I ask for, is just that someone from your board really take time to sit down and collaborate with our school leadership in something, you know, other than an email. I appreciate, Superintendent, you got back to me personally within 48 hours. That's awesome. Thank you. But our school really does need some collaboration and clarity around those issues, and I just don't think over email is a really great way to do it. And I think that someone from your board really needs to go and sit down with our school board president and our principal to come up with some collaborative ways that we can work together. You know, we are in school. We would love to share our best practice of what we're doing, so you can learn from us as well. You know, we're all in this together, and quite frankly, that's all I'm asking for, and I truly appreciate your time. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Our final speaker is Sam Nelson. Hello, Sam. We're ready for you if you're ready for us.
Great, thank you. Can you hear me? Good. All right. Well, my name is Sam Nelson. I'm a resident of Stillwater, a parent at St. Craig Catholic School, and I'm also on the school board there. I first want to thank you for your time and consideration of the issues that we've been presenting to the school district. I know that there's a lot going on for this year, and a lot of things to be considering. So thank you for your efforts and your work on this. I think a lot of parents sent letters to the board and to Superintendent Lansfeld regarding three issues, busing, special needs services, and health services at the school. Superintendent Lansfeld shared on September 8th a letter with the St. Craig Catholic School, and she said that the school district wants to make sure that non-public students are being offered the same fair and equitable options that Stillwater area public schools are also receiving. That isn't being fulfilled in a number of ways, and I want to focus on, on two of them in my time, busing and special ed. Right now, every public school student is being provided busing for any day that they have in-person learning. That's not the case for St. Craig Catholic School students. We have five days of in-person learning. Every Friday, our students are not being provided with busing to school. This isn't equal. Public school students are receiving busing for every day that they are physically going to school. St. Craig Catholic School students are not receiving that. And the district has indicated that if the public schools go to a full online learning model, then most likely it won't be providing any busing at all to St. Craig Catholic students. Again, the burden being placed on the non-public families is much higher than the burden on, on the public school families. Public school families are being provided with busing for every day that they have in-person learning. This is not fair, and it's not equitable. Next, for special ed services, St. Craig Catholic School was informed by the district that special ed services for private schools would be remote. I understand there's been some communication that that was a joint agreement, but from what I've heard, there was no discussion, and there wasn't an agreement. It was just told to the school, this is how it will be. From an equity perspective, from an academic quality perspective, and from a practical perspective, this just isn't a good solution. First, equity. I understand that for public school students with special needs, a determination is being made on a case-by-case basis for when remote learning will actually work for that student and when in-person learning is going to be more appropriate. Why isn't that being offered to private school students? They should also be receiving that special individualized attention to make sure that their needs are being met. Second, from an academic-
I'm sorry, Sam. That is your three minutes.
All right, could I, could I wrap up really quickly?
You can do, yep, one, yeah, sure.
All right. I think just in terms of quality of education, I mean, just look at what's happened tonight. You had, I think, 50 people waiting on your YouTube video to watch this, and for some reason, the technology isn't working. I think it's clear from, from that, remote learning is not equal to in-person learning, and our special needs students should be receiving that in-person learning. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
That was our final speaker.
Okay, thank you, Carissa. All right, our next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. I'll read through the items, and if anyone has any questions or wants to pull anything, you can just let me know. Item A, the minutes from August 14, 2020, special meeting. B, the minutes from August 20, 2020, closed meeting. Item C, the minutes from August 20, 2020, business meeting. Item D, minutes from August 20, 2020, closed meeting. Item E, the dispersment report, register from August 22 to September 11. Item F, the human resources personnel report. Item G, the Marshawn McLennan Agency Workers Compensation Renewal. And item H, the amended working groups. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about any of these items? Director Pelletier?
Thank you, Chair. I'm gonna pull item F, Human Resources Personnel Report, just to make a quick statement about one of the individuals there.
Okay, very good. Any other concerns? All right then, I would like to entertain a motion, please, for item A, B, C, D, E, G, and H.
So moved.
Director Riley moves. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Director Pelletier, seconds. All right, we need to vote. All in favor. Sherry, we need a roll call.
Director Bruington?
Yes.
Director Gillis?
Yes.
Director Pelletier?
Yes.
Director Potatik?
Yes.
Director Riley?
Yes.
Chair Stivland?
Yes.
You have unanimous vote.
Great, thank you. All right, Director Pelletier, item F.
I just wanted to make, you know, there, you know, we see some resignations and retirement and whatnot, and there's one in particular that I just had to make notice of. This community, we pride ourselves on, on music and on the arts, and I just wanted to, this hurts me very much on a personal level, being a violinist myself, and I have three kids in orchestra, and I just want to say, you know, I don't know, I, I think pretty much everyone in the music community knows this, but Zach Sawyer is, has resigned as the head orchestra director of, of the high school. This hurts. I was on the interview panel for, for Zach, and at the same time, I understand he's, his, his, the woman that he's engaged to is from Boston. So I just want to say, Zach, we wish you well. You will be sorely missed. You did, you had a level of skill for the students that, that not, not everyone has, and you will be sorely missed, and I can tell you that I, I know that the leadership here will work very hard to find the very best, not a replacement for you, but someone of, of your caliber and will carry the music excellence forward. So best, best wishes to Zach, and you know, you will be missed very much. And with that, I will move to, oh, and I lost my screen. Item, is it F? I will move to item F.
All right, thank you very much. Director Potatik?
Yes, what I'd like to do, as long as we're on that page, and I think I was remiss by not speaking earlier, but there are three retirements that I think should be recognized. And the first of those is Catherine Beebwo. I'm not sure I pronounced that correctly, but 30 years is a huge amount of time. And I want to personally and on behalf of the board thank her for her experience and for her time in community education preschool as an assistant. I think that's very crucial, and we all know how important those years are to our kids and to our families. Secondly, I'd like to recognize Sandy Hagan also has a retirement, community ed preschool assistant as well, and she has put in 12 years for us, and that also is a a fair amount of time. And then last, of less years, but I'm sure very fulfilled, fulfilling years is Sandra Millard, who put in four years as a paraprofessional, 12 hours per week, early childhood family center. So to all three of those people, I want to thank them for their devotion and dedication and service to our children. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion to approve item F. Can I get a second?
A second.
All right, Director Bruington, seconds. All in- All right, Director Bruington, seconds. All in favor, Sheri, we do need a roll call vote again.
Director Bruington?
Yes.
Director Gillis?
Yes.
Director Pelletier?
Yes.
Director Patachik?
Yes.
Director Riley?
Yes.
Director, Chair Stivland?
Yes.
Do you have unanimous vote?
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is, we're moving on to reports, and the first one is the Smart Restart Fall Planning Update. And with this, I will turn it over to Superintendent Lansfeld. Oh, you're on mute. We can't hear you.
Sorry.
Happens to the best of us.
Thank you. Chair, Stolen Board Directors, we have started school, and I'd just like to review some data and a few activities during our next board meeting. We'll review the first day, first week of school in more detail, because this is a soft start week. And so, this week, we, just today at 11:00, we have new COVID rates for our county. Washington County is 22.46 cases per 10,000, so it went slightly, just a tiny bit down. Last week it was at 22.7. You look at our neighboring counties, Anoka went down from 18.97, it was 19.11 last week. Shisago is at 15.71. It went up, it was 13.7 last week. Dakota went up from 22.55 to 23.86. Hennepin County went down from 19.49 to 19.21, and Ramsey County went up from 18, from 19.35, it was 18.73. So, they're all hanging in there pretty close to each other. In our neighboring counties, we're still between that 20 to 29 cases per 10,000, which would put us, if you're just looking at the COVID rates and hybrid learning for all of our students, at this time. Operationally speaking, we have been able to fill the majority of our vacancies with the 29 FTE for custodians. A lot of that, again, we were able to shift with some parent hours in there, and we're continuing to hire a few of those positions. The, the health staff, we have just about all of those positions covered too, but all of the offices are fully staffed at this time. And I believe nearly all of our teacher positions are filled, and many of the permanent subpositions are in place, if not all at this time. And the buses, we are at 23 students on an average of 77 students per bus right now with our physical distancing guidelines. Just looking at some of the buses arriving, it's really spaced out, and the buses are very, very busy. We do have a lot of new drivers, but so far, I haven't received a call. I know they're working very, very hard. Thank you to all of the bus drivers that are doing their very best for our students right now. So, it seems to be running smooth at this time, and when we're fully operational next week with all of the students coming back, we'll see how it goes next week. So, at the elementary schools, I've been able to get out to some of the elementary schools this week, and they are ready. It's so wonderful to finally have students and some families in the classrooms for their Ready, Set, Go conferences. This year, we're doing 30-minute conferences with 15-minute breaks in between to just really space them out, make sure everybody can do that distancing. We have time to start to build those relationships that we know are so critical and important, especially at the beginning of the year and a year like this. The teachers are really prepared. They've done a lot of work. The kids, you can see their, their eyes are smiling, they're wearing their face coverings, but you can see their eyes sparkling. They're excited to be there. And I will give a shout out, is it Brookview, Lake Elmo, where else? Is it Afton Lakeland today? And Afton Lakeland, shout out to Ian. I was ready to give him a hug and a high five, and he said no, and he had practiced his air hugs and his air high five, so I was practicing with him. It's, they're ready. And so, just happy to be there. They are, elementary schools are running that this week with the Ready, Set, Go conferences. The web, where everybody belongs, this is our sixth grade transition program at Oakland Middle School and Stillwater Middle School. And again, I want to say, wow, the students, the eighth grade students were there greeting, the sixth grade students coming in on their A and B days. It was organized, the staff, number of the staff I've known from elementary school have transitioned up to the middle school. Great to see them out there. Everybody out in the hallways, they, all of the student class list ready to go. Everybody who's helping the students find their first class, and it was really neat to see, and students being leaders and peer supports, that's a great way to go. So, a lot of preparation, but I think it's well worth it. And then at the high school, it was another transition for our ninth grade students with our link crew the first couple of days, and we had a lot of helpers as well, and they did an amazing job. I was there this morning. We had a lot of organization and students helping each other. But again, the staff, they were everywhere. The nutrition staff right in the front, they had the grab and go meals ready to go with breakfast and encouraging students. If they wanted some food, they could take it, they could eat it later. It was there. The custodians and engineers, they were setting up in the lunchroom and half of the gym, all of the little tables and desks that they could spread out for lunchtime. We aren't quite sure how many students will be eating in that space, so they had a lot of space for students to spread out. And I know it's a lot of work for them, but it looked great, and they were, they were working very, very hard. I was also able to see the ALC today, and I hear that they're going to be starting another garden, hopefully, with some of our land that's been donated over in Lake Elmo. So, I am excited to visit that, hopefully, this spring and see what they can do with that. But again, all of the signage, the directional signs on the floors and on the walls, this, this has been at least six months of planning, and just, just to see it in action today, it just, it was pretty amazing. Okay, and finally, this is great, USDA free meals for everybody this past spring and summer, and then it ended. We were very sad to see that go and very happy to hear that it's back until the end of December now. So, all students can eat free breakfast and lunch. They will be provided this fall, whether learning at school or from home. And I just want to really emphasize this, because we're going through thousands of meals, and the ladies and gentlemen that helped prepare this, they, they want the food to go to families, and they want this information out. So, when, how do students get their free meals? When you are learning at school, breakfast and lunch will be available at no cost to students when they're in school on an in-person or hybrid learning schedule. For high school students choosing early release, they have free grab and go lunches, both hot and cold meal options. They'll be available for them to take with them once their class is released to lunch. Students choosing this option will be asked to just take it with them, and we'll figure out if they want to eat it there, or they can take it to where they're going. If students are learning from home, we have a week's supply worth of both breakfast and lunches that will be available for pickup on Fridays unless otherwise noted for holidays from 11:00 AM to 12:30 PM at Stillwater Area High School and Brookview Elementary. Meals will be available for the on-the-dial or hybrid learners for days students are not in the buildings, and 100% of online learners and distance learners will receive free meals for all scheduled school days. So, great news. We're excited about this, and please families, try it. It's great food. I love it. It's not the same type of food I remember eating when I was in the elementary school, and my grandmother worked in the school lunch program, so I hope, she doesn't hear me saying that, but this is, this is great food. Lots of fruits and vegetables, so. Okay, and with that, it's, it's been a, it's just been a great start so far. I know there's been a lot of anxiety and a lot of worry, but it, to have the kids back.
Great, thank you so much. Board members, does anybody have a question before we move on? About the school start, Director Pelletier?
First of all, great report, Melinda, and I had so many messages of thanks from families, moms, dads, kids, the staff did a phenomenal job. And I, I think honestly, the kids were just excited to be back. I agree with you wholeheartedly on that. The bus company, it was one day for my son, but right on time. I can't even imagine. It's a new company, and then they've got to do these schedules, so kudos to them. Just well done. Way to put the kids first in all capacities. I did have just a question that I hope I, I received, and I hope I don't botch this too much, but, and maybe this is down the road, Melinda, I'm not sure, but could you speak to the online, so if you, apparently we moved the preschool kids out of some of their classes that were, that some of the kids went online. So, I think there was a concern of what happens when the online students go back? Is there, are we gonna run into an issue? Are we gonna address that at some point? And that's, that's all I had for questions. Thank you.
Yeah, we, we will look at that with each quarter as it comes up, and we'll provide some time to look at the staffing. There's some wiggle room, because we know students will go in and out, but we'll work together. Our goal is to try and keep as many preschool students and the childcare at their home site as possible, knowing that we might need to make some changes in the future. But our priority is to try and keep them in there, but we do have the physical distancing parameters, and we need to keep that as well. But so far, it's worked out with our online teachers and, and students, if they need a space, and we needed their space at that school, we, again, just as a reminder, opened up Oak Park Elementary for some online teachers if they need that space, which has then opened up space at the elementary schools for Brookview and Lake Elmo. They need some extra specialist rooms, because they were crowded, and then it also offered more childcare space as well and preschool space.
Thank you.
That's great. Director Patachik?
Yes, Melinda, quick question. You talked about Ready, Set, Go conferences, and the one that you showed the picture of was person-to-person. Does anybody do those virtually? Do they have that choice?
Both, yes. Yes, I was in classrooms and saw them done both ways. And so, we, we had some online teachers that are in some classrooms, as Lake Elmo this morning, and, they have their laptop set up, and they're having those, those Ready, Set, Go conferences online with families. Other families are coming, and that's that they bring, one parent with them, we're trying to limit the people in the building, and they're meeting, and if they come early, they have space outside the door where they can wait, and then they have distance in the classroom where the teacher's able to meet with a student one-on-one with the physical distancing. So, yes, options.
Good. Thank you.
Great. Director Bruington?
Melinda, nice to meet you.
You too.
Just have two questions, and you may have answered these questions before, so I apologize if you've answered them already. But I know we recently hired some new teachers. Can you tell me how many special ed teachers we hired? And then my second question is, if you have a student doing distance learning, and they have an IEP that requires OT or PT or some other service like that, how is that service provided to that student?
Yeah, that will go through, and I don't know if Polly's on here, but that will go through their IEP, which is a collaborative process where parents and the IEP team come together, and they work that out. And they do have services at the school if they need that, physical therapy or other services. I know, just saw one of the speech teachers had gone online and has a face mask that is clear, so students can still see their lips and the tongue movements. Sometimes they fog up a little bit, but it was neat to see. So, the teachers are coming up with some creative ideas to meet the needs of our, of our students. The other question, special ed staff hired. I have not gone to the board to ask for extra special ed staffing for this. I believe that it was covered this spring, but I could find out and provide that answer to you at our next board meeting or again before that. But I would need to ask Polly and Carolyn Ziski and Caitlin Willis in our special ed department to find out more about that.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, Kathy Moan, I think is on, and Kathy, I don't know if you know anything about the special ed staffing, but I think all the positions have been filled?
Yes. I believe that our special ed positions are filled. We did not have any additional positions. We had a lot of positions that we were filling this spring due to some changes and resignations. We could get you the exact number for the special ed. Get that to you.
Great. Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none. Thank you so much, Melinda. We'll go on to the next item on our agenda, which is the Reimagine Stillwater Report. And I think we're going to go to Jennifer Cherry. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. Thank you.
Members of the board and Superintendent Lansfeld, I'm excited to provide an update for our Reimagine Stillwater Report this evening. And before I get started with our report, I'd like to also introduce you to the newest member of our LNI team. And our newest member is our, is our data and assessment coordinator. Her name is Marcy Levy McGuire, and she comes to us from Brooklyn Center Community Schools, where she served as their district assessment coordinator. She has previous experience as an instructional coach, a charter school director, a principal, and many years as a science teacher. She's currently a doctoral candidate at the University of St. Thomas, where she also completed her administrative licensure program a few years ago. Marcy comes to us with just an array of experiences. We're really excited to have her in Stillwater and have her as part of our learning and innovation team. And Marcy is here with us. If, Marcy, if you want to just say hello and introduce yourself quickly to the board and the community, you can-
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having me here. I'm extremely excited to be in Stillwater. I think it's a wonderful place. I'm excited to work with this amazing team of people. I think today might be day seven or eight for me, and my list of things to do is already over 25. I've really been able to just jump in and get started. You have amazing, incredible, wonderful people in the learning and innovation team who have helped me tremendously just to get my feet wet and to get started. I know we want to have as much data on our students as possible, because we don't have much from the spring or from last year. So, so there's a lot to learn about where our kids are and where we can take them. So, I'm excited to be a part of that effort, and thank you to Melinda Fiero, who has really helped, helped ease my way, to Rachel Larson, to all of the members of the learning and innovation team, and to Dr. Cherry for having me here tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you, Marcy. And as she just stated, her list is long of things to do already. One of the key efforts that I'm here to talk to you about tonight is our Reimagine Stillwater efforts around diversity, equity, and inclusion, and how that relates to our district strategic plan, and our Stillwater-specific objectives are listed on the screen, just to refresh you on what that looks like. And then also, you also can see the key pieces from our World's Best Workforce Plan. So, our latest World's Best Workforce Plan was updated, and we have plans, or I'm sorry, goals that have already been agreed to for the current school year. What we are really focused on and a little bit concerned about is how we are monitoring and assessing those goals based on the data that we have available. So, due to not having all of our MCA assessments completed last year, we're limited in the data that we have available. We're going to have to get a little bit creative with that. And we will be coming to the board and an annual public meeting in December where we have to report on, provide an annual update on a combined report, which is the World's Best Workforce and our achievement and integration work. And so knowing that is coming in just a few short months, we really need to get started on our World's Best Workforce Committee planning. Our district advisory committee, as I've looked at the membership, we've had some pretty solid membership that's been consistent for the past two years. And knowing that we need to come back and ensure that those same people are still willing to work on, on this with us and move forward. Also, just wanted to provide some additional detail for the board. In-state statute, it does talk quite a bit about our requirements for our district advisory committee, where it shall reflect the diversity of the district and its school sites and include teachers, parents, support staff, students and other community residents. This is a key piece that was added just a couple of years ago. And this board knows I was a member of the World's Best Workforce Committee in my previous district. One of the things that was pointed out to us and, and a shortcoming that we had is enough support staff represented on that advisory committee. So we just want to be really intentional about being very inclusive of multiple stakeholders on our committee. Whenever possible, we should have parents and other community residents comprising two-thirds of our committee. So the state tells us that we need to make sure that we're not overrepresented by district administrators and teachers to make sure we have a really great voice from our community and have a large majority of that or two-thirds represented as parents and other community residents. All of this work is also tied back to the work that happens within our school sites in our school improvement planning teams. And that's where these strategies come alive. And so as the schools are looking at their school improvement plans each year and working on those strategies, it all ties back to this work that we're doing within the World's Best Workforce Committee. So saying that, and the reason why I'm bringing this to you as part of our reimagine Stillwater Report this evening is this is an integrated effort. And so we are looking at our strategic plan in the school district, looking at, it is a concentric circle with our World's Best Workforce Plan, our achievement and integration plan, and then how that plays out within our school improvement plans in our school district. And so I'm very excited that we have so much great work that's been started in our strategic plan that carries us through the 2021 school year. And very excited to bring our advisory committee together and get started on reviewing our goals and moving forward and continuing this work for the new year. And with that, I'm open to any questions that the board may have.
All right, thank you. Director Potatik?
Yes, Jennifer, what I'm wondering is this, you said that the makeup has to be about two-thirds parents at least. That's, that's a goal of what you want to do. It seems to me, you know, when this was passed as legislation, the philosophy was also getting the community behind what it was you were trying to accomplish.
Yes.
You probably have more insights on that than I do, but is that consistent? Is, is that one of the main purposes that you worked so hard to get that comprehensive background of people?
Absolutely. So I believe the initial legislation was passed in 2014. And I think what the state and the rationale behind it is that we had a school district administrators that were carrying out strategic planning with a lack of community involvement at times or really an understanding on how to do great community engagement in strategic planning. And so that's, I, I believe why that was written into the legislation to have a majority of the members on this advisory committee come from parent and community member voice.
Thank you.
And, and also I'll just state too, it's in the legislation too, about reflecting the diversity of the community. So there really needs to be an intentional effort to have a process in place to solicit and encourage membership from all facets of your community to ensure that we have really a representation of all of our stakeholders involved.
Director Riley?
Thank you for this conversation. This has kind of been a little bit of a contentious issue as we were developing our, even our literacy curriculum earlier on. When you talk about involving the stakeholders and the, the two-thirds of the community, are you, is it specific to include that a participant does fill multiple roles? Or because I know, I think what was happening here was a person was feeling, filling multiple roles of like staff, then parent and the diversity piece all in one instead of bringing in others in each filling individual roles?
Yeah, so that's a really great question. When we submit our report to the state, we have to identify the role. So we, we can have a stakeholder, although they may fill multiple categories, we actually have to place them into one of those roles. So whether it is a support staff member or a parent, we have to identify that in our report. And again, that's always encouraged to have your entire community represented and we would do our best to make sure that that happens. And so what I plan to do and what I would expect is that we will have a process to invite membership and always thinking about committee size too. You get too big of a committee and it's really hard to move forward with building consensus. Get too small of a committee and you don't have a really great representation of your community. So you really need to find that sweet spot of somewhere between 25 and 45 members for any advisory committee. And then what I've done, what I've liked to do in the past is once we solicit membership, have individuals fill out those applications, then we work with, I would work with the school board chair, the school board in appointing the members for, for the committee. Make sure we have every, every, every area represented.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Director Potatik?
Yeah, this is really Director Bruinton's question, but how about special ed?
Yeah, well, that's, that's a portion of our community. And so absolutely, I think that would be essential to have a, a parent of a student who's receiving special education services. The other, just kind of identifier that oftentimes we look to Director Potatik would be our students who are receiving English language learner services as well.
Good, thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments before we move on? Thank you so much. This is really exciting. I'm excited to see where we go this year with the World's Best Workforce and all the other things associated with it.
Thanks so much.
Yep, thank you, Jennifer. The next item on our agenda is the board meeting options. And I think we're going to have a presentation from John Perry, our technological guru.
I've been in a fight with YouTube for the last hour, so forgive me. Transitioned my mindset from, from that to this. I'm gonna, I'm gonna share a little document here for this conversation and then I can certainly send this to you after the meeting. And I'm hoping right now that you are looking at a board meeting locations document. Great.
Yes.
So I, I took a look at what our options are for in-person board meeting amongst the pandemic is requested and broke it down into sort of the, what we have and what we possibly could have. And so on the top here, we've got Zoom as we're meeting currently, the City Hall space and the Oak Park building. And then on the bottom, I took a look at a couple of alternate facilities, specifically Stillwater Middle School, which is a location we've held board meetings in before. The first piece I wanted to look at was the board member layout. And we know that this has been something we've talked about in the past in terms of how does the board face each other versus the audience, et cetera. And so I really just wanted to emphasize that with Zoom, we get this kind of a tiled view of each other. At City Hall, Stillwater Area High School and Stillwater Middle School, it tends to be more of an arc. So you know, sometimes we like to use the term horseshoe, but when, when you're at City Hall or if you're on stage, you wind up with more of a gentle arc. At Oak Park, we do have the option of creating tables that face each other because we have the opposing cameras. And so even though we, we spread board members out, it makes it at least a little bit easier to, to keep the board closer together, not really in a circle, but maybe more of a, more of a square. And with seven board members and six feet of physical distancing, that really helps minimize that spread. In terms of the COVID-19 capacity, I believe this is based on 40 square feet per person approximately. And so with Zoom, of course, we have our limit of 300 people and then whatever we broadcast out from there. City Hall is around 20. I consider that an estimate. It was hard to get an exact number on, on what their capacity was with physical distancing. About 45 people at Oak Park, please keep in mind that includes the board, that includes all administration that's in the room. The auditoriums at Stillwater Area High School is 67 and the auditorium at Stillwater Middle School is 98. And those numbers are pretty accurate because in order to have students in the building, we've already done studies on each room to determine what the exact capacity is during, during this time. I briefly skipped over it, but I do want to point out that City Hall does not support physical distancing for the board. So that physical distancing line there is really about the board. And there is no way to provide enough space at City Hall for the board to sit. Whereas we can at all these other locations. Local cable access is something we've considered in the past. We are set up for local cable access at City Hall in Oak Park. None of the other locations are set up for that. Any location can be made ready for YouTube. It doesn't take very much equipment to do that. The complexity really comes into how do we want to provide for the video and audio mixing? In the auditoriums that we have, they typically have a wired mic or two that they can provide to speakers that are going to address the students. But none of the locations have a microphone setup like we have at Oak Park or like you'll find at City Hall where there's a multitude of microphones for all of the board members and a speaker, et cetera. When they do performances at these sites, they generally rent stage level wireless microphones for, for all of the production. So if we were going to use one of the school locations, we would have to figure out what that audio equipment looked like. The other decision that needs to be made is whether we're going to do a one camera or a multiple camera setup. One advantage to having the board in an arc is that it's pretty easy to just pan board members from one location. Whereas when we're in places like Oak Park, we of course have opposing cameras and we can have opposing tables. Pretty much all of the equipment would have to be purchased and installed or moved from another site like Oak Park to get a place like one of our auditoriums up and running for board members if we're really going to do recording and broadcasting. Even at a minimal level, we'll need a camera, we'll need the microphone setup and we'll need to figure out the audio equipment mixing. My goal in providing this information was really to kind of summarize, if we wanted to look at those locations, we need to do some work in terms of getting quotes, determining what that, that, well, let me reverse that, determine what our scope is and then get the quotes together to, to actually figure out what it costs to get those sites ready. And I want to emphasize that that's, that's probably a multi-month process. There's, there's defining it. We need to bring out the companies to bid it and then we need to do an evaluation, orders and installation, et cetera. And I only bring that up because the pandemic moves very quickly. And so while those are options, they aren't options for the next few board meetings, right? There, there are options that we would have to be looking out much farther into the future. So in terms of our immediate options with City Hall out of, out of the loop, Oak Park is certainly viable. But it also might mean following the tune of some of the other districts that have gone this direction. And similar to our buildings not being open to the public, our board meetings would have very limited public access. By the time you're done with the board and administration, you're probably down to about 25 or 30 seats available in there. You have open forum speakers and that's going to put you into the high teens. So that's the general landscape of what's out there. I'd like to answer any questions that you guys have today and then we'll see if there's a direction for follow-up.
Right, board members, anybody have a question about this? Director Pelletier?
John, thank you for the presentation. I think the public is wanting us to exhibit leaderships and we have kids going back to school right now. And I think we need to make an effort to be leaders in this. So I, you know, I'm, I'm an advocate of trying to find a way to move forward with this. It seems like Oak Park is the, correct me if I'm wrong, would you agree that Oak Park is the quickest, easiest and less expensive, least expensive option right now? Albeit the fact that it's limited in scope with regards to how many people can attend. And then if I'm looking at, you know, the other two schools down here, it seems like there's a lot of potential cost to that, you know, I, it, quite a bit. Is, do you think there's a big, I mean, do you think these will add up to a big cost? It seems like it to me, maybe not.
I mean, I think the cost is going to depend on the scope. So you know, if the direction is set up one camera, get it hooked up to YouTube, get us a minimal microphone system, you know, that's going to be a lot less expensive than if we were to mimic what City Hall or Oak Park has.
Turn around Oak Park right away, pretty quickly?
I, I mean, in my opinion, Oak Park's ready to go.
So what can I, I'll ask a question. What happens if we have board members that have for a health reason or some other reason discomfort with being in person or, or it's just not advised? How does that work in terms of having a combination?
That's a great question. So that, that's a question that I appreciate and it gives me large amounts of anxiety. Anytime we try and run mixed medium where we have some people online and some people on in-person, there's some challenges that are posed. Typically in the past, we've had scenarios where we have one person remote into the meeting. And our strategy has been to provide that person with an individual setup that is akin to a person that's sitting at the table. So we use a TV, we use the same microphone that the board members normally use. And we use positioning in order to create the general effect that the person is in the meeting room. On the technical end, this has the effect of merging that person's video with the board in the same way that everybody else is. So from the cameras on the ceiling, from the audio in the microphone, the, the production quality is, is leveled out in terms of, of volume and visibility. It's one thing to do that for one person, but each of those connections that we add becomes more complicated. Partially because you don't, we wouldn't run something like this where you had multiple board members joining the same Zoom. You would have a separate video connection for each person that's connecting so that you have one face on each screen for each remote participant. And so, you know, again, do, doing that for one person or there's a number of districts that do that now for their open forum speakers and they have their open forum speakers attend virtually is something that we've done and can, and can. And they have their open forum speakers attend virtually is something that we've done and can and can continue to do. If we need to be prepared to do that for multiple board members, we're going to have to set the criteria on how many remote connections do we need to be prepared to support for a meeting? So that we know where the cutoff is that we can no longer support it. And that way I can ensure that we have all the technology available at the site to do that. So we already have the technology to support one remote connection, but if we were going to add another one for maybe open forum speakers or if we need a backup in case a second board member will just need to know that in advance. So we can get that set up. And I might also need some of my staff to help me because sometimes those connections need a certain amount of of oversight to make sure everybody's getting connected to the right computer. If they get disconnected, that they can get connected back in, et cetera.
I'll go with Director Gillis and you're muted, so.
Hey, John, when you're doing like a single person remote, are you assuming that they're at home or they somewhere else in the building?
That's a good question. I'm I'm not making that assumption at this point. I'm assuming that they have a really solid internet connection and a quiet space to participate with us. But I'm not sure exactly what the rules are around that. I know in the past when we've had board members remote in, they have had to be in a posted public place. And that that may create some other complexities, but that's outside my knowledge area.
If the meetings were being held at Oak Park, is there enough individual office space that could be used that would make your life easier if we wanted to isolate someone or somebody wanted to quarantine themselves from the full group?
We could definitely support that and that would provide them with a public space potentially. From the technology perspective, it's going to be the same. I'm going to need to have a dedicated webcam for them so that they can see the room, a TV so that the room can see them. And then we'll hook up a standard microphone to to level the audio that they are providing to the room.
Any other questions? Director Potatik?
Yeah, my phone, I apologize, but my phone rang Sarah when you were asking your question. So I just heard John say something like that was a good question. What I'm concerned about is this, for some people, a virtual is safer than being person to person. And I'm thinking that may be true of of people who want to talk at open forum as well. Would we have the capacity to do both? People who wanted to appear at open forum and people who wanted to call in like they're presently doing.
I mean, you know, the great thing about technology is is it makes everything possible. I I think we would run open forum the same way we're running this board meeting right now. So there would be a TV present to represent the open forum speakers. And either myself or somebody else would sit at a computer that's connected to that television, letting each speaker in one by one, just like we do now. The main difference is is there would only be one person really in the meeting at a time. And so you wouldn't see this multiple tile view for the open forum speakers. You would just see the one person that is there speaking. And then we would remove them from the Zoom meeting and we would add the next person in line to speak or have somebody from the audience come up and speak if it was if it was a mixed medium format. The the big challenge there again is it gets into each of these computers needs a little bit of love and care. And depending on how many we're going to have connected, I just might need somebody else there to have some extra hands to help facilitate the meeting.
And then is that assumption that if the open forum speakers are virtual, is the assumption in that scenario that we don't have an audience? That we we the audience is not allowed to participate or be there in person or?
That's up to you guys.
Okay.
I think the question was if some of, well, I just, I think the question was what if some open forum speakers weren't comfortable coming in person? Could we still facilitate their connection online?
You so they would have a choice. They would have a choice to do that, what you just described or come in person. Okay.
It's possible.
I I have a concern about having the room be open but have a limited number of spaces.
Right.
And how do we manage that? You know, what I I'm just wondering what that looks like. We have to define the number of people allowed in the room and then have hearts stop. And do we have someone standing at the door or something? I mean, I'm not sure exactly what that might look like.
Right. And I think you're thinking in the right direction. You know, if you're if you emulate what we're doing at schools, we've created traffic patterns so that people come in one direction and leave in a different direction. We have teachers and staff standing at doors to help slow people down and meter them out and remind people to use the the spacing. You know, we we would take chairs away so that there was a more limited number of seats available, I think, so that each person had that six feet of physical distancing available. And and it would be a little bit different production than we've done in the past.
Yeah, that's true. Any other thoughts, questions, comments? Okay, well, I I appreciate that you've given us a lot to think about here, John. This has been really helpful. And I think we will continue this conversation until we figure out what what makes the most sense for for us going forward.
Great.
Okay, thanks. And the next item on our agenda is an action item and then you can just stay there, John, I guess, because it's the Dell server contract.
This one is one that gives me much less anxiety. So I I think, thank you for for having this on the agenda. I know we had some issues last time. We didn't get the paperwork that required signatures. And so all of that lease paperwork is attached in the packet now. So if I can just give a brief recap, we brought the RFP process forward and went through the finance committee with that. And we did a report previously with the school board leading up to this item, but just to highlight a few things. We moved to what's called a hyper converged server environment four years ago, which was a pretty big shift for the district from where we were at. We jumped on a technology that we weren't deeply familiar with, but that was highly regarded in the industry. And we took a cautious step and signed on to a four-year lease in order to test out that environment, which would give us an early exit if it didn't go well. Or conversely, an opportunity to double down on the technology and and continue moving the district forward. This is one of the few things in the district that we lease. We do that intentionally in order to create a fixed annual cost around providing support for a fully supported server environment. So we know that we have a completely reliable network behind the district. We have had zero server downtime in the last four years. I will attest that's the first time in my career that I can claim that kind of a track record. We're pretty happy with the technology. So we posted a new RFP looking to keep the price point where it's been, which is about that $56,000 a year price point. That said, we wanted to move more of our environment over to this this hyper converged system and plan for expansion. So we asked for five and six-year lease options for some some more heavy, you know, maybe heavier duty equipment would be the way to look at it. And received multiple bids back. The network and server team evaluated those RFP responses and is recommending that we move forward with the Dell VX Rail Hyper Converged System. It maintains our price point of right there around $56,000 a year. It is included in the technology budget. Our current lease expires in November of this year, so we would be working on getting that equipment in place as soon as possible in order to do a cut over and then return the current Lenovo equipment that we have as it comes off lease. And I'm hoping that the board will approve this tonight.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the Dell server contract? Director Pelletier?
John, excellent presentation and finance and I I just can't love the tech talk enough. I I embrace it so much. No, I wonderful presentation, wonderful job. So I would like to move that we approve the Dell proposal option one.
Very good. Thank you. Do we have a second, Director Potatik?
I'll second.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments about this contract before we vote? It sounds amazing.
If you never hear about it, then it's doing its job.
That's exactly right. That's what we like. Just to be magical stuff happening behind the scenes. All right. Thank you so much. I think it sounds like we're ready to vote. Sherry, are you there? Can you help us with a roll call?
Director Bruington?
Yes.
Director Gillis?
Yes.
Director Pelletier?
Yes.
Director Potatik?
Yes.
Director Riley?
Yes.
Chair Stivland?
Yes.
Do you have a unanimous vote?
Thank you, board.
Thank you. Thanks, John. All right. The next item on our agenda tonight is the online learning coordinator. And I it looks like I want to turn this over to Superintendent Lansfeld and Superintendent Cherry.
Thank you. Um, we are asking for the school board to recommend the approval of the hiring of an online learning coordinator. This evening, the K-12 online learning coordinator position is a one-year-only position to support our schools through learning and teaching in our on-the-dial environments this school year. It will help to support all of the teachers and learners in both the hybrid A and B and 100% online learning environments. This position will help coordinate, organize and facilitate communication and planning across buildings, grade levels, classrooms and families. Because we need to be able to adapt our learning environments on the dial as conditions warrant, we must have alignment between the timing and content of what students are learning, regardless of if they're in the hybrid A, B or 100% online learning environment. Additionally, at the elementary level, it will help families who selected 100% online learning navigate being connected to their students originally assigned building and their students' online learning teacher. This one-year-only position will be a member of the Learning and Innovation Department and work closely with the building principals. This is brand new this year, but we truly feel that it's needed. At the elementary level, we currently have 35 full-time online elementary teachers. And since this is such a brand-new experience for all, we want to do it well. And Dr. Cherry, if you'd like to add anything to that?
Thank you, Superintendent Lansfeld. I also just wanted to share that although we are seeing an increased need for this position at the elementary level, because we have standalone teachers who are teaching only online, very unique that they need to collaborate across schools within their grade level. And so supporting our teachers and their lessons, in their teaching practices, doing all of this in a in a virtual space is something new for us. And we really need some additional coordination and support to assist all of the work that's happening at the elementary level. But we know that this isn't unique to the elementary level. So although that is the large portion of this role, it the position will also be collaborating across the secondary levels as well. So middle school and high school as well. This is a coordinator position because we have so much that we need to do to align instruction both within across schools at the elementary level within grade levels, but also across the levels K-12 as well. And so, yes, as as Superintendent Lansfeld just said, we are looking at this as a one-year-only position, knowing that we're going to need this additional assistance and support through our year of of switching across the dial and also online learning.
All right, thank you. Go ahead. Did you have something else?
We just like the school board to approve the hiring of online learning.
Okay, can we get a motion to approve the online learning coordinator?
I didn't hear what Superintendent Lansfeld said.
I would just.
I think.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
We would recommend the school board approve the hiring of the online learning coordinator at this time.
Okay. Oh, one quick question I have. What are you looking for? I mean, what do you look for in the background? Somebody who's part John Perry and somebody who's part Melinda in there?
A superhero. No. No, we we want somebody that has a strong learning background, possibly an administrative background or aspiring to be an administrator. Dr. Cherry?
Thank you. Yes. So these people are out there. We're looking for somebody who has a strong understanding of how to do online learning in a really effective way. So someone has who has a stronghold on pedagogy in an online environment. And also, as Melinda just shared, someone who perhaps is an aspiring administrator. We don't see this work going away, but this role right now is shaped as a coordinator role because it's really coordination duties. These online teachers are still reporting to their school principals, so we're not really in need of an administrator at this time, but really a coordinator. So Director Potash, to answer your question, it's somebody who has a strong online learning understanding and background and also can collaborate with teachers and assist those teachers with their professional learning communities. Also, someone with extremely strong communication and support skills so that they are also able to communicate and support with our families who have questions about online learning. I I also just wanted to mention, we already have the a position like this approved in our our budget that we had discussed at the last board meeting. At that time, we had mentioned that the position was on hold, that we weren't requesting it. At that time, we just didn't have enough information to bring forward to you. But we, after further review and understanding with our administrators, we have landed in the the determination that a coordinator is required at this time rather than an administrator.
Thank you.
Director Gillis, do you want to go first? I don't know. I can't hear.
Oh, sure. Can can everybody hear me? Okay, great. So my my question is, so this online coordinator, will they be tracking the progress of these 35 online teachers and telling them to speed up or slow down their lessons plans to meet what the others say group of fourth grade teachers are doing throughout the district, whether they're hybrid or online? Is that is that what I'm getting from aligning the 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 teachers or or is there some other alignment that we're trying to achieve?
Do you want me to answer that, Melinda?
Sure.
Uh, yes, Director Gillis. So they wouldn't be evaluating or instructing the or directing, rather. This coordinator wouldn't be instructing or directing the teachers on how to perform their work, but really operate like a coach and a collaborator. So teams of teachers work together in setting their lesson planning, which includes the pacing of the curriculum. And so it's working with those teams to make sure that they are in alignment and on the same page.
Sarah, we can't hear you, so I don't know if you're going to have to switch your mic, but I'll give it a shot. Thanks, Jennifer, for bringing up what you did about the already the pre-approval that we did a few meetings back. It might even be a couple of months back now, close to a couple of months back. I just wanted to say that if, you know, the board has any questions on on the the funding and the financing, the expenditure approval form that has been put together with the request of this position is actually beautiful. I mean, there is so much clear, concise information in here. It it should really lay everything out very clearly in the the intentions and requests and the longevity of the. in the, the intentions and requests and the longevity of the position. So thank you very much for the work you did on that. I appreciate it.
Jennifer, can I just, can I just ask a, a question? Did, I'm assuming, so this was more of, I, I heard, thank you for that explanation that it's more, you went away from the administrative type of position, which was also at a much higher FTE, so, at the time. And I do like to see the breakdown here. By the way, I agree with Director Riley on that, the coronavirus funds, 40%, 42% in the general fund, 60%, 63K. So I, I really appreciate that breakdown, so people can see specifically where that is. My only question was, and I'm assuming this is true, so maybe just, I know it's true, but maybe just speak to it. Assuming you collaborated heavily with the different principals and what their needs are, because I, I assume that different buildings hold, you know, quite different needs. So if you could just maybe speak to that a little bit.
Melinda, do you want me to take that again? Yeah, okay. Um, and so, yes, thank you, Director Pelletier, for that, for that question, or really a comment for us to, to respond to. Our principals will still have the same number of teachers that they'll be working with and evaluating their work. So their workload will still remain the same. At this time, we have some teachers, though, that are not physically in their building, and they're doing this online teaching. Some of them may be located at Oak Park Heights, and principals will have to be, the evaluation, teacher evaluation will look a little bit different, just because we're in this virtual world. But for this, for the most part, our principals, in terms of, of the work that they do in evaluation of these teachers, that will remain the same. The other piece of this is we do not have an online school. So these teachers will still be connecting back to their homeschool sites. The thing that's unique this year is that some of these teachers will be teaching students that are in their home site, and some of them may have some students that come from other school sites. And so we can combine students across schools. And again, again, that need to ensure that we have collaboration within grade levels for the online sections, as well as the collaboration back to their homeschool teams. And so all of that is going to take an extreme amount of, of coordination, but not necessarily administrative work.
And I, I'm just going to add back to Director Gillis's question. We do have students that anytime can decide to go from on-the-dial to online. That's across our state. And so we do need to, more than ever, collaborate. And not every teacher will be right, you know, with every other teacher on every day. But we do, district-wide, because we do have students grouped from different schools together in the online classrooms, we do need to somewhat stay close together with our standards and where we are with the, the progress that we're making throughout the year, because students might be going in and out of on-the-dial and on-the-line. So, back to your question, we, we will be collaborating with instructional coaches, teachers, building principals, everybody, to just put some checks in place for that for our students.
It's complicated. Sounds complicated. Can you hear me? Nobody can hear me.
Can anyone hear me? We can't hear. So I'm going to move to hire the online learning coordinator.
I'll second. Okay, I guess I'll do the roll call. Director Bruington?
Yes.
Director Gillis?
Yes.
Director Pelletier?
Yes.
Director Potatik?
Yes.
Director Riley?
Yes.
Chair Stivland? Do you have a unanimous vote?
So we should be on Board Chair.
Can anybody hear me now?
Yes.
Very little, yes.
Oh, that's so crazy. Okay, hang on.
It's pretty good right now.
Okay, can you hear me now? All right, so sorry about that. Very good. The next item is the board member reports. I don't, do not have a board chair report tonight, so we can move right on to the working group reports. And typically, we would have a community engagement report first. I think Liz is the chair. She's not here. Does somebody else have something they want to share regarding community engagement?
I can quickly say, Director Potatik and I, with also Director Weisberg, had a meeting on Thursday. Went very well, very informative, and I think we had a nice discussion about world's best workforce, kind of the history of it, where it began, where we're at right now, what our needs are. And I think Jennifer, I, I'm personally excited that Jennifer can bring her skill set from Anoka to, to that. And we also discussed a volunteer, type of a volunteer coordinator position, kind of down, down the road a little bit. It was a preliminary discussion. And, you know, honestly, more to come on that later, but it was a good, productive meeting.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Jennifer was very thorough, but what I'd add to it too, I think it gave us, and I'm talking not only Jennifer and Liz and myself, but also of the superintendent and assistant superintendent to talk a little bit more. And in particular, what we talked about were some learning goals that occurred, whether it's improving reading and, and achievement. And so it, I personally walked away pretty excited, and I think most other people in that meeting did as well.
That is great to hear. Thank you. We'll move on to finance and operations. Director Riley, do you have a report?
We did not meet yet this, this month. We have not met yet since the last meeting.
I think we have one scheduled next week. Is that correct?
Correct.
All righty. Very good. Legislative, do we have anything for legislative, Director Potatik?
We always have something for legislative. Up until this meeting tonight, we only had one member of this committee, and you're looking at him. And coming out of this meeting, we have three members, and I'm, I'm excited about that. It's going to be a tough year in the sense that the prediction is that there's going to be a shortfall of $4.7 billion for the 22, 23 biennium. So that's not like we're going to be able to go to the legislature and say, hey, we want this, this, and this. We can say that, but the reality of, of being able to offer that will be a challenge. Regardless, tomorrow morning is a meeting that I would recommend anyone who wants to on this board, or obviously Melinda and Jennifer are invited as well. And that's Bill Morris is going to speak at the MSD meeting tomorrow, and it goes from 7:30 till approximately 9 o'clock in the morning. But the real prize there is the guru of political surveys of where the state of Minnesota is at, is going to be presented by Bill Morris. And so anyone who wants to go, all you do is check in with Zoom. And for regular board members, that's not very difficult. And if you don't have the Zoom, ask me, and I, I can send it to you tonight. Also, what I did in, because I knew what was happening tonight, is I called Scott Krumquist and asked that if Bill or Tim wanted to be in, when they would get that Zoom number, they would be cleared to go in. But I thought it was not appropriate for me to contact them before this meeting. But if either of you want to do that and are available, and that's very questionable. Again, the meeting is timed from 7:30 till 9 o'clock, and Bill Morris is going to talk. Then the last thing I, I want to mention is this, is that both AMSD and C, which is another organization of coalition of school districts, get together. They're framing up. They're in earlier stages of putting their political platforms together. And very soon, what we're going to do, and I will try to work with Sherry and get a meeting set up for a legislative committee, and then I'll ask Melinda and Jennifer and Carissa and whoever else if they want to attend that. Because one, we, one of our goals this year will be to get a platform unique to District 834. And then the other one is that usually in November, December, sometimes earlier, we hold a legislative breakfast, so we'll be getting that. And last year, we had a wonderful turnout. Who knows what we'll have this year? But those are some of the things we'll work on. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. And the last one is policy. We don't, have not had a policy meeting, so I don't have anything to report at this time, but I'm very excited to have two new board members back on some policy. Director Bruington and Director Potatik and I are going to make that up, and we're, we're ready to go, so. Very good. Board member reports. Anybody have anything they want to share tonight? As a board member report, Director Riley?
Well, I'll share this. I, I was kind of hoping we'd be live tonight, but being that we'll have to be uploaded, that'll work too. Been working a little bit in the background with some of our, our buses, with Lance and Melinda. And we have the majority of our buses that are parked at our Oak Park Stagecoach facility. And, you know, we're thankful to them for approving our CUP to allow us to, to keep moving on that. In the, in the interim, we have about 40 buses that are kind of homeless, so to speak. They really, we don't have a place to park them. I want to give Mr. Ted Kuzelsky a huge shout-out. He has worked very collaboratively with the district to find and help us maintain some space on, at Stillwater Middle School. So it's property we already own, which minimizes any extra expense that the district would incur. So that'll house maybe 15 to 20 of our buses. We're working on a second site right now, so there'll be more information on that to come later. We, I don't want to kind of give that up yet, but between Ted and Tom, and there was also a Mr. Kurt Cole, who started kind of leading me in that direction. It was just a, a citizen, a citizen that sent me an email inquiring on areas of, areas he may have known of to be able to park the extra buses. And that's how I just landed on a phone call with Ted, and, and we got there. So thank you, Mayor Ted, for working collaboratively with the district. By, by parking these extra buses on property we already own, it'll save the district anywhere between $50,000 to $100,000. So that is a phenomenal collaboration we've achieved, and so many, many thanks.
All right, thank you very much. Does any other board member have a board member report? Director Gillis?
Well, it can't be too long. Haven't been a board member long enough to say much. But first of all, thank you very much for this opportunity to be on the board. And it's really an honor to serve with, with all of you. And I look forward to joining the Personnel Work Group and joining Mike on the legislative work group as well. On a personal note, I do want to congratulate Tim, my fellow freshman board member, for getting onto the board tonight. And finally, I want to say happy birthday to my daughter Emma, who is five years old today.
Oh, wow. Congratulations. That's awesome. Thank you. Anybody else? All right. If there are no other board member reports tonight, then I will call for the adjournment of this meeting. Thank you all very much. Have a good night.